And welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, September 28th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. And tonight we're in committee meeting. And we will start off with committee of the whole. We had earlier thought that Director Terry Moore would be joining us, but the mayor has an update for us. So Mayor, we'll turn directly to you and then we'll open it up for questions amongst council members. And then we will open it up if some attendees also have comments because we knew that several weeks ago, we told them that this would be an opportunity for some discussion. So Mayor Patterson.
Thank you, President Nisley. And again, in conversation with Director Moore earlier this morning during my staff meeting, you know, she had indicated that she didn't have really any firm, concrete updates to give city council, although I did ask for her to send me at least some information that I can report out in her stead. She is still wanting to come before council when she has figured out things such as determining the return rate or date, rather, I'm sorry, the work status and work assignments in working with proposed programs and associated costs with having virtual streaming coming from Arts West. Again, still looking at the how things will unfold under the Ohio Department of Health guidelines. Currently, the capacity, it looks like 40 persons can be in the upper space. I don't know what that would look like in the lower level or whether that is the total as being 40. But, you know, as council is aware, one of the things that is really needed to make virtual programming, reliable virtual programming out of Arts West is to improve the broadband service into that particular facility. And again, as I've mentioned to council, exploring the use of the CARESAC money to run fiber up to Arts West, also working with the government channel to see what equipments and technology would be necessary in order to do the streaming of virtual content out of Arts West. So those are the updates that I can give council right now and those who are watching tonight. Director Moore is still working through the remainder, remaining details to bring the program specialist back on board with Arts West.
And comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Smedley?
Thanks, President Nisley, and thank you, Mayor, for that update. So I guess we don't really have any updates really then. We just have that she's working on it, that we don't really have any other details other than that.
That's correct. I mean, she, those are the items that she shared with me. But again, there aren't, at this point, still not a concrete date that, that, you know, the program specialists will come back, back on said date or anything along those lines. But as soon as she works through the details, she will certainly provide those. If you, it's interesting, if you look at the Arts Parks and Recreation, you know, there are two different entities that are involved with Arts Parks and Rec. There's certainly the Athens Municipal Arts Commission, and then there's the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. One of the roles of the advisory board is to be kept apprised of employment decisions, personnel within all of Arts Parks and Recreation. And she also wants to make sure that as she's working through this, she gets that information, at least let the advisory board know what, what decisions she has made so that they're kept abreast. To not do that would probably be doing a disservice to the advisory board.
Other questions? Yes, councilmember Crowe.
Thank you, President Nisley. Thank you, Mayor, for a brief update. I don't know if there are questions that we can provide to Director Moore in advance for her presentation to council. But one thing I would be interested in is, I believe there have been some classes that have been re-instituted or have been offered. And I'm just interested in how the decision is being made in terms of allowing those classes to go forward and, and, and then the decisions about closing down Arts West. So if that's something that you can ask Director Moore about, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smedley?
Thank you, President Nisley. And I was curious too, if the plans about the fiber, which I appreciate your thinking of, Mayor, and looking into, would that be a part of her plan or is that outside of her plan?
Well, it's part of her plan. It was part of my plan, knowing that we needed to do something because I'm, I'm well aware of the current microwave shot that is feeding broadband to that building, which is not the best and it's not the most reliable nor stable at that particular facility. This would correct that problem and make sure that, that reliable streaming could happen out of Arts West. But the, our Director of Information Technology, IT, David Dudding, is also working on this as well to, to explore fiber installers to be able to get fiber up there. So they are working with companies that this is what they do for a living.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Katsas?
Yes, thank you. And I guess my only question is, is there then a, an adjusted timeline? Do we have an idea when Director Moore might be coming forward with? You know, I'd hate to see this getting kicked all the way down to January and that's just, you know, and I understand that we are, we're in a, we're in a process where we do have a lot of, a lot of things in motion that we can't necessarily control, but could there be a date selected that we, we might be hearing back?
When I spoke with her earlier today, you know, she indicated that, that she could come, hopefully come before council at the next committee meeting or soon. Again, this is not kicking things into January at all.
Perfect, thank you.
And I think what might help us too, I'm sure she's preparing a written report, as you said, she's working with the Arts Parks and Recreation Committee and the advisory committee, but some kind of written report that we can read ahead of time, even if it's even a basic framework outline, timeline, that will be helpful, I think, for council members to have. Auditor Hecht?
Thank you. I just want to add that I know that Director Moore has been working on this and we have had several conversations over the last couple of months or more about the finances. And I, I just think that as the auditor, it's my duty to remind everybody, but the bottom line is the cost. When you're not bringing in any money, you know, we can't afford to keep the doors open and pay people, et cetera, et cetera. So anything, you know, that happens, if the mayor can work out a way to increase the broadband better, you know. Anyway, so the thing is, we don't have the money right now in Recreation or Community Center to just keep doing things without bringing any revenue. But, you know, none of our operations are really quite as usual. And so I, I just want to say I hope people will be patient and understand that when she calls and asks me, you know, do I have the money to do this? Most of the time I have to tell her no. Recreation and the community center rely on income tax revenue, which we know is going down. And, and then partially, and then partially on fees for classes and things. And it's just like anywhere else. If you have to cut your class size in half, or if you have people afraid to sign up to begin with because of what's going on, you know, I, I just hope that everybody understands it's a lot more to it than just saying, well, yeah, we all support it, bring everything back. It's just not that easy. That's all I want to say. And I said, the bottom line is the money.
And Auditor Hecht, one of the questions I see in the chat is that when it was going its strongest at Arts West, did it self-support? And I think our, our answer is, is that it's subsidized in a way, like our Athens transit system. And I don't think it's ever been a break even, revenue in, you know, expenses out kind of venture.
Right, well, and that's the same with the community center. The classes and the rentals don't pay the bills. And that was the same at Arts West. And it does have a percentage of income tax that we use to support that. But, you know, that's finite. It's not an endless amount of money coming in and the revenue has gone down. And so you have to look at both sides of it. You know, you're right. That's why we still have to charge for classes and rentals and anything else that we have going on.
Yeah. And one of the other comments in the chat was there a comprehensive plan showing all revenue generating programs to be able to see what was the most expensive kind of programming? So some, certainly something for Arts Parks and Recreation Advisory probably to take a look at maybe as they discuss that with Director Moore. Other questions from council members? Or Auditor Hecht, yes, another comment?
So I just want to answer a couple of these chats, that classes aren't based on, the classes are, that's not entirely the way it works. So it, it's not based on the number of students, but actually it is because we pay someone to teach the classes and it's not a rental. When a class is sponsored by the Recreation Department, the city is paying for it. Nobody's renting the community center. Now, if someone does decide, ask if they can do certain things there, they might be paying rent. But that's not typically, if the, if our city is offering classes, it's not a matter of the rental. It's the matter of the revenue we bring in. And it's the same at the community center and always has been. If they don't get enough people to sign up, then it's not worth paying someone to be there. And at Arts West, it often involves paying someone to be there after hours. So it's just not, not quite that cut and dried. And yes, Arts West is a community service. And I live on the west side. I was the auditor when we purchased the Nazarene Church to put Arts West in, and I've always been 100% behind it. But we, we can't afford to just operate any of our buildings. You know, there's gas, electric, you know, all kinds of things we have to pay. It's not a matter of just opening the doors and flipping the lights on. And as, just a reminder for everyone, some of you might already know this, but personnel is like 70% of, of everyone's budget. It's very expensive. And what somebody makes an hour or bi-weekly or annually, however you want to look at it, you need to add about 30% onto that for what it costs the city to pay taxes and benefits. So there's, there's just a lot more to it money-wise. But I, I don't know. I know that Terry and the mayor are working very hard to bring something back. It just won't be the same. It's like a lot of other businesses that have carryout only or, you know, different things. Well, they're probably not making the kind of money they did when they could do carryout and eat-in. And it's just an adjustment. And so, you know, rentals were probably the main revenue there. And rentals are a big deal at the community center too, but nobody's renting those. You can only have so many people there. And to pay, you know, 50, 100, $300 for a room, people aren't, you know, they're not having wedding receptions or family reunions or anything else like that. They're, they're not renting it. And the number of refunds we've given people for rentals and classes this year is just in the tens of thousands of dollars. So, you know, there's just a lot more to it. And so I would just ask that everybody know that, that Director Moore is working really hard to try to figure out what she can make work that the city can afford. And, you know, that's about all I can add. I know the mayor is, is trying to support her in that.
Okay. Any other questions from council members? I would like to open up if there are persons, we know, we have received many emails in support of Arts West. And so we know that many of the people here tonight, joining us as panelists, are supportive and that, yes, we, we thought that Director Moore would be here, but will, I'm sure we will hear from her soon. But I would like to open that up if there are comments or questions that you, that any of the other panelists or the, excuse me, the attendees would want to voice to us. We would like to provide that opportunity now because we know that many of you waited patiently several weeks ago and heard some of the initial discussion. So Scott, if you can help us see if anybody is wanting to speak, they would have a few minutes to make a statement or ask a question.
Chris, this is Emily Prince. I've been unmuted. If it's okay, I can go.
And you've got up to three minutes to speak with.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank everybody. It's, it's really been wonderful for me to see the council support and city support and, and support from the administration. Thank you, Mayor, in, and, and the recognition of how important the art center is for everyone. And Kathy, if memory serves, you were there back in 2005 in June when Mayor Weil took down a wall. So I know you, you've been deep in it and your daughter took some classes, if I'm not mistaken about that either. So thank you for that support. And then, so with that, I do understand the budget constraint. So this wasn't an earlier question, but it sort of becomes one now is, it, it again goes to the question of why, why Arts West and also I believe the childcare, which of course is a different issue. And, and I intimately know how tough it is for arts organizations throughout the country. Was on a call earlier with Senator Brown about the Save Our Stages Act, which is something that might be able to help the Arts West facility reopen. But I think we have to get out of the idea that it needs to be revenue generating. It can probably be income neutral, but the city needs to maintain the facility and they need to maintain a staff person. And if there isn't a staff person there who knows how to do art programming and understands curriculum and understands the community and the radical collaborations that are going on with all of us right now, if we push this to January 4th, the cold start is going to make it even more difficult and even more difficult for writing grants, all the programming grants, those deadlines are now. There'll be probably another round in April, but we don't know what that's going to look like. So there's a lot that needs to be happening now that doesn't really even have anything to do with a program or the facility being open. Somebody needs to be thinking about specifically programming that space and supporting the arts in Athens. And I think there's new levy money as well in, in one of the 270 lines that, that could probably help that. And I know a lot of community members have, have offered to help and I think we need to take advantage of that offer of help. And, and I want to thank you so much again for your time, for letting me speak.
Okay. Thanks, Emily, for joining us tonight. Is there anybody else who would like to make a statement or ask a question from amongst the other attendees joining us tonight, public members? Not seeing any communication from Scott at our government channel about this, so I will, he doesn't see anyone. So we will end the committee of the whole. Stay tuned to hearing from Director Moore with the long-range plans. And we'll now move on to our plans.
I see that Brandon Thompson has his hand up.
Oh, thank you. Brandon, you do. Brandon, please join us. I was scrolled down to the bottom of the list. I apologize. Yes, so welcome, Brandon, and you've got up to three minutes.
Hi, I don't know if you guys can see me, I don't know if my camera's working. I thought I was raised, sorry. Yeah, no, I, I appreciate everybody just talking about this and, you know, I'm on the Arts Park and Rec Advisory Committee with, with Terry and we've been discussing some of that stuff in our meeting last Thursday. I do wonder, are we going to hear before the next meeting? Because we are meeting, I believe, Thursday, October 15th, you know, so that's about three weeks from now. But the one statement I wanted to share, I really just want to reiterate, we're going, we're in COVID and we really need to think about art in a different way. There's a reason these cuts were here and not somewhere else. I don't know if it's, it's a different, you know, if it's AMAC and Arts Park and Rec are a different committee or something or emerging of the two or something, but it just seems like art is just at the very, very bottom and doesn't have the support. And so I think this is a great time, you know, Emily Prince just spoke about grants and everything like that. Another way to just look at what, how we do this, how we fund, I think with, you know, the broadband we're going to have, if that goes through, that's going to be fantastic. You probably can't see my screen, or if you can, I have a poster behind me from Geek Week. That's a movie series I did that was actually born at Arts West and it cleared 5K in our first year. Those are just different ideas that can, I think, be made that, that space or whatever. So, but it needs support and support in people, not just, you know, some money or, you know, a part-time person needs to be ideas and people who know the facility so they can bring those people in. So, and I know this is a challenging time, so, you know, everyone keeps saying, think creatively. That's just more creative ideas and, and good luck to everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, Brandon. And councilmember Katsas?
Yes, yes, President Nisley, thank you. And I'm sorry if I'm speaking out of term, but I was, as this conversation was progressing, I remembered a, a, I spoke with a citizen a few weeks ago and they spoke about the idea of having a Friends of group that would be supporting the arts in Arts Parks and Rec. Because when you look at some of these grants, well, you know, a nonprofit can apply for them, but a, but, you know, a government entity cannot. And so having, having, you know, pairing a nonprofit with, with a government, you can, you can find additional funds to, to do this. And so, you know, and this isn't necessarily something that we might puzzle out right now, but I do want to, want to bring it forward so that people are thinking about it in the, you know, in, in the coming year, in the coming years. I don't know. You know, it's just something that, that I found interesting and I've seen it a lot in, you know, in, in parks, in Recreation, because Recreation also, even at the state level, they try to convince people to do nonprofits that help, help our state parks. So it's, it's a viable platform and it might be something that we need to look to if we don't have the funding to, to do what we want to do.
Thanks for the comments, councilmember Katsas. And it looks like Brandon responded that, yes, they're working on a Friends of the Arts Parks and Recreational Council through the Advisory Council. So that's good, good to hear that update. Thank you. All right. So I'm doing one more check through our list. Chelsa Morahan, you've got your hand raised. Would you like to speak? You've got up to three minutes if you would like to join us.
Thank you very much. So I didn't really have anything prepared, but I wanted to just kind of reiterate both what Scott and, I'm sorry, what Brandon and Emily had been talking about. I was listening to the Arts Parks and Rec Advisory Board this morning, actually, because I was not able to view it live this past Thursday. But one of the things that I really enjoyed out of the conversation, and it wasn't necessarily about Arts West, but it was about the, the school system and how they are turning all of those extras, what they are calling extras in, and they're calling them specials. So your gym and your art and your music and things like that, and how one of the board members was a little frustrated with the, the term specials because that means it's the first to get cut. And it is traditionally the first thing to get cut are the arts and the music and the gym and things like that. And so that really hit a point with me because that's kind of what my entire life has been working for nonprofit arts as well as for Arts West and now within higher education. So I think it's just one of those things that we need to think about, that these things should not be cut because they are so important to everyday life. You know, the movies that you watch, the books that you read, you're running, I mean, everything is, you are ingrained in those specials. And so those should be, you know, utilized and supported through things like community funds and everything else. So I just wanted to say that as well as AMAC, which I am a member of, we did have a conversation during the past AMAC meeting about starting a 501(c)(3) nonprofit for Friends of Arts West. And so I'm just going to throw this out there that there probably should be more conversation between APRD as well as the, the Rec Advisory and Arts West because do we really want to create two nonprofits that are funding two different Friends of, or do we want to try to collaborate and see what we can do to support all of the programming, both arts and rec, throughout the entire community? So thank you so much, everybody who is attending as well as all of our city council persons. We appreciate that you are continuing this conversation. I really hope that we are able to come up with a solution sooner rather than later because we, we do have a time crunch here. I appreciate everything. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Great. Thank you, Chelsa. Okay. All right. I don't see any other hands raised. And Scott, do a double check for me and Debbie, just to make sure, because I don't want to miss people.
President Nisley?
Yes.
Might, I make a comment?
Sure.
I'd just like to say that I agree with one thing that Chelsa Morahan just mentioned. She made an excellent point. I'm the city council member that serves on the Arts Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and I would be very happy to talk with Director Moore about the possibility of letting people who really support Arts West collaborate with us on the advisory board so that we could write grants or, or just talk about this possibility. So thank you very much for Chelsea Morahan, for your good comments, and I will get in touch with Terry Moore. Thank you.
Okay. And it looks like we've got another volunteer down there too, Emily Prince. So, okay, great. Thank you all so much. I'm back to gallery view now so I can see my fellow council members too now. All right. Okay, I think that we will then move on now to Planning and Development Committee. And that's chaired by councilmember Fall and joined by councilmembers Jeff Reisner, Sarah Grayson, Arianne Smedley.
Okay. Thank you. The first on our agenda is a planning review recommendation from the Planning Commission on a major lot split down on Herald Avenue. This is down sort of by the, behind Larry's Dog House and back in there. It's one, one parcel that is going to be split into three different parcels. They will be zoned as industrial and manufacturing. And the city in this process, the three plots have road frontage on, on Herald, but there's going to be two city right-of-ways to help with other two city right of ways to help with other, um, traffic through the, the little industrial park. And that will be deeded to the city as, as city right of ways. Everybody's, um, signed off on it. The health department has no problems because it has, um, water and sewer. Um, so it's, it's pretty straightforward. So, does the mayor have anything else to? Okay, great.
Well put.
Okay, and who else? I have to go to gallery view now. Um, oh, Erin, Smedley.
Thank you, Member Fall. Um, can you tell me if there's anything on there now and if, and what the plans are? If there's nothing on there now?
No, I mean, it's, I, well, the mayor would have more information on that. It's like empty now, pretty much. And it's going to be industrial. So if it's, as long as it's within the zoning.
Yeah, I'm just curious what plans are, if there are any.
Um, I have not been told of any plans per se. So, um, I would expect that most people who are doing this sort of development would want to go through this process before going through a city permitting process because what happens if they didn't get to, there was something wrong with being able to split it, sort of thing too. So, so it's kind of the first process. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Um, this will go through three different readings and it will have a public hearing. Sarah?
Yeah, I just, um, wanted to know or ask for clarification on how this fits with the city's, um, plans over on the west side. Has there been talk, I think about extending Harold? Um, is this sort of a coordination, um, to, to allow for that eventually? No.
Um, I think that's still in the talk stage.
Well, and if I may, um, Councilmember Grace, no, it, this, this lot split is not predicated on that, uh, nor the other way around. It, it's just, um, a, a lot that the owner would like to split, uh, and to open up for the possibility of further development down in that area. But again, one's not contingent upon the other.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. So this will have, um, a public hearing along with three readings. I will, uh, introduce it next week. Other questions? Great. Second on our agenda is the, um, as, as, as you know, we've been going through this process of annexing land down on Lurig Road, Lurig, um, across from University Estates, uh, for, to WODA with a development, um, group for, um, affordable housing, multi-home, multi, um, apartment development there. Gone through the process, um, they have gone, and the WODA and their, um, legal team have gone before the trustees, the township trustees and the count, and the county commissioners, county commissioners are going to release the land. WODA has made all the arrangements with the different types of, um, services that they will be, be getting and not getting. Um, so the last sort of thing that needs to happen is because it's going to become our land, we need to zone it. And so when it comes into the city, it will be zoned, um, for multifamily housing. So that's an R3, um, zoning designation. This one will also read by three readings and will have a public hearing. Though it's had many public hearings, it's had a lot of discussion as we've gone through this process, because it's, it is an in-depth process. So, questions?
Thank you, Member Fall. Always exciting to see this project, pro, project progress. Uh, I have heard, uh, a couple times the request for a traffic study and was just checking in to see if that's been done or if that's been planned.
Um, it will be done. It hasn't been done, so, um, um, the, the, there will be, as, as it sits now, there'll be an entrance or an exit on Lurig and then one on 682. But in order to do that, you have to have, uh, a traffic study, right Pete? Member Katsas, is that true?
Yeah. Thank you.
Member Katsas?
So, and, and just, just for clarification, so, uh, a portion of Lurig Road then would then become a city street?
That wasn't in my recommendation. That's a good question.
That is, that's an outstanding question, uh, Member Katsas. I will check in, um, with the, uh, acting director at EPW to find out if that is the case, that, uh, we would be in receivership of part of Lurig Road. I, I don't have an answer to you on that. I suspect not that it is just an adjoining property up to Lurig Road, but I will find out. That's a, that's a interesting question.
Okay, well, well, thank you. I think of these things.
Right. Um, I know some people are concerned about the pond that is there. The pond will not go away because that is a, a retention pond for University Estates. Um, they plan to use it as part of their, um, site. So it will be, uh, used, nice, nice site. Not swimming, not thought about swimming. So kind of a, a nice water feature. So, um, I've, I've done other work with WODA, um, because they have done other projects in the area, and they do really do a good job in this whole process and, um, it's something that's in line with our comprehensive plan and our, um, affordable housing plan. So, other questions? Well, that's all I have for my agenda.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Finance and Personnel Committee. This is chaired by Councilmember Crowell and joined by Councilmembers Reisner, Katsas, and Smedley.
Thank you, President Nisley. We have one item on our agenda tonight. It is a prior year expense, uh, for engineering and public works. Uh, and that expense is as follows. There was a, um, verbal agreement made to, um, purchase salt truck bed liners, uh, by EPW. Uh, there was a unfortunate, uh, miscommunication about the, uh, quote. EPW believed that the, uh, total price for having three trucks have salt bed liners installed would be $18,000, $6,000 per truck. But after, uh, having one truck done and then sending in the second truck to be done, they received the bill for the first truck and it was $18,000. The contract that was signed did indicate that that was the, uh, price, uh, uh, for the individual, uh, truck bed liner. So the second truck was already, um, being fitted and, uh, they have canceled the plans to have the third bed, uh, installed. But the, this is a prior year bill, uh, to pay for that second truck that was already in the process of, of being fitted and has been fitted. Uh, so this is, uh, an amount of $15,000, uh, that, you know, EPW is asking council to, uh, to pay for, uh, as a prior year bill. Are there any questions from the Finance and Personnel Committee? Anyone else on council have any questions or supporting statements? Administration, anybody? Okay, well, thanks for coming today.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember Crowell. We'll move on now to transportation and that's chaired by, chaired by Councilmember Katsas and joined by Councilmembers Crowell and Claude Veltzer.
President Nisley, thank you. It's been a while, so I might be a little rusty, but we have two bullet points to discuss tonight for Transportation Committee. Uh, the first one, uh, temporary sidewalk extensions. So, um, council will remember right before recess that we, uh, that we voted in, um, the ability for business owners to, uh, to, uh, apply for a permit and purchase, uh, parking meters based time to allow their businesses to, um, do things more outside. And so that pilot program expires, uh, on the 30th of September. So this, this kind of came up on us, uh, rather quickly. Andrew Chickie is here this evening to, uh, to kind of give us an update on, uh, on where the project is and, and how it's, uh, how it's working. And, uh, and then we will be considering next, uh, next Monday, um, a, um, uh, maybe an extension of this program. So, Andrew, thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Katsas. Thank you, council members, for, uh, giving me a chance to visit with you this evening. It's always a pleasure to see all of you. The Exter Outdoor Seating Program, um, more informally known as Parklets, uh, just for people viewing have a, a visual, um, in their head, uh, is a pilot program that we started earlier this summer. We kind of got a late start on it, but it was a result of the Uptown Business Association, the mayor asking us to think outside the box, um, and considering what other cities have been doing and how we can make something on the Court Street area both, uh, usable for businesses to create additional space outside of their businesses, uh, specifically eateries, uh, but also looking at what is something sustainable in the long term? What can we do beyond, um, some of the things that were thrown out early in the summer as far as shutting down the streets? Would that work, not work, that kind of thing? We wanted to see what would happen if we took small sections, uh, of space and re-envisioned them, in this case, a parking space and made it look like something different. And, um, the part, the Exter Outdoor Seating Program, uh, we had multiple businesses take out applications with a lot of interest and enthusiasm. Uh, we had one business that followed through and went through the entire process and, um, and actually built their, their structure, and that is Brennan's. And they're here with us this evening and I'll give them a, a, a chance to, uh, share how it's impacted them and how it's worked so far. Um, and why, um, it is, uh, important to look at extending this a little bit longer beyond what we originally discussed as far as, um, end of September. What I can tell you is the other businesses that have looked at it, we got late into the game with that. Uh, many of the businesses that I discussed this with and we measured things and looked at it really closely, uh, one in particular, they decided to close their doors soon after taking out an application, uh, temporarily, uh, even though they're very enthusiastic about it. Another business, looking at how we have the language structured, we may need to, um, before we adopt it, uh, permanently, or if, if council decides to go that route, uh, we may want to tweak some of the language to make it a little bit more permissible. Um, we discovered that the slopes of Athens are, are a little challenging and we kind of knew that, that at the outset, but, uh, the language that we used, uh, was a little prohibitive for, uh, one business in particular, uh, that, uh, their frontage is on a much steeper slope. We have to maintain, uh, access, accessibility. So throwing some cones out and, and some barriers and calling that good just is not good enough for Athens. And we want to make it, um, both, uh, usable, but also visually appealing. Uh, again, this is a sustainable idea, sustainable program that we want to, to make it. So I'm going to give, uh, Jessica Thomas is here this evening, uh, maybe Josh as well, but I see her, her picture, so I'm going to go that it's Jessica this time, uh, to discuss how the, the programs worked for her business, the impact. I hope that all of you have had a chance to drive by or at least stop and sit in the space. It is amazing. So Jessica, if, if you could, just fill us in.
Thanks, Andrew. Yeah, I'm here. Josh is kind of lurking around back here, so, um, yeah, it went really well. First, I mean, we really want to thank you for all the hard work you did because you getting everything filled out and turned around so quickly made it really great. Um, we've had a really good, uh, response. We've had, uh, lots of people coming in and sitting in it and hanging out, you know, and visiting and having outdoor, uh, meals and enjoying that. We've got 10 extra seats with that. Um, we've had a lot of people, like, uh, through the summer tourism from Hocking Hills coming down and kind of seeing that as an extension of vacation. Uh, I think it'd be really awesome if in future years we had more of them. Um, I know this year was, was obviously, we all know, a really wonky, wild off year, but, uh, I think if, if some other businesses do it in the future, it would really make uptown. It's a great compromise between street closure and no street closure because you really get the feel, it seems like you wouldn't, but if you build it right and you situate it right, you really get the feel that you are just, you know, patio dining in a larger city. We really thought going in at the end of August that we would be taking it in. And then, you know, obviously things have continued a lot, uh, a lot more outdoor dining is needed. The weather's been pretty decent for Ohio right now, so if we can extend that longer and see how long it can go, um, that would be helpful until, at least till, until it's cold, you know? If it, when it gets cold and people don't want to sit outside, then obviously it won't have a use. I think some people have been hanging out in the evenings after we closed and later in the night. We haven't had any issues with, uh, any major, major vandalism or anything, so that was nice. We had a couple of small things. Our cute little bike ornament was broken, but nothing major. So that was really nice to see. Extending it through a little longer does give us a little more time with slightly increased students to see, you know, how it goes, um, in the late evening hours, which is kind of our, was our concern early on, but, yeah, I mean, it's, I'm really glad the city did it. I'm really glad that Andrew and Paul worked really hard on it. And, uh, yeah, we've been really happy with it. We've had a lot of, a lot of, uh, compliments. I don't know if anyone has any questions or?
No. I was a little slow on that. Uh, Member Crowell, yes, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Member Katsas, and thanks, uh, Jessica for being with us today and Andrew. I just wanted to say that, um, I think the, the Brennan's Parklet is ideal. And if, you know, from bicycle parking to the cool umbrellas that are like half, uh, you know, not blocking the roadway, uh, I've had lunch there and it works perfectly. One of my big concerns with the Parklets were, you know, how close they would be to traffic and how you dealt with that separation between the traffic and it feels, you know, I didn't even notice the traffic when I was, uh, eating lunch there. Um, one of my questions is, uh, obviously Andrew worked very hard on this, uh, as did Jessica and Josh, uh, if there's some way that we can, you know, um, video, I don't know, you know, remember how well that they, that they did this installation and recommend, I'm sure other business owners in town have seen it and, and have realized how nice it is and, uh, you know, really what it adds to the downtown, quite frankly. Um, I'd love to see more of these just like that one. So that, that, I just want to say, great job.
So to answer your, your question, uh, Councilmember Crowell, we give a packet to business owners that includes, uh, design standards. A lot of what we used were other larger cities and we had photos of examples from Philadelphia, from Seattle, um, Vancouver, I believe. So having, um, the Brennan's included in that packet, maybe the front cover of that packet, I think is a great idea. And I'm happy to, uh, include that, uh, with, um, the Thomas's blessing to, to do so since it is theirs. They, you know, it's their, their idea, their baby really, uh, for how they designed it.
Yeah, that, that would be great. I think the more we have, the more, you know, this year is what it is, but in, you know, next summer, you know, we'll still be kind of unknown, but in the future years, the more of them we have, it's, it's another way to attract people in, you know, the Bailey's grows, Hocking Hills visitors are coming down. And if we can build that habit now and in the spring and early next summer and have more of those around, I think really gets a lot of people, um, the Visitors Bureau's been actively trying to do that. So this is definitely a way that could get people down here more. Um, yeah, we, we wondered about the traffic. I know when Sam was saying, like, you don't, you think about it and it moves pretty quick. And when you sit out there, you really don't notice it. It's a, it, it is a very vacation-y feel. We've enjoyed looking at it. We haven't sat there very often ourselves, but we really enjoyed looking at it a lot. But yeah, video or pictures, um, I would encourage, I didn't, you know, I didn't even would talk to, I'm like, you really should put one out because it's, it's really helpful. And with all the cases going up right now, having extra seat outs, extra seats outside has been really helpful. going up right now, having extra seat outs, extra seats outside has been really helpful. You know, it extends what we have to offer, but also just keeps people outside. So if they are with other people, they're hanging out with a lot of wind going by, the plus of the traffic.
Member Cladfelter.
I I agree with everything that Jessica Thomas just said. I think during this COVID pandemic, providing more outdoor seating is one of the safest things that we can do to both support our locally owned restaurants and to try to keep people safer and prevent them from getting the virus. So I really applaud Brennan's for being the ones to move on this. I really like what you put up. I've I've just kind of done little, little, very non-scientific surveys of people sitting there. I've chatted with a few of them. They all love it. They said traffic isn't a problem. They really like it. And I did talk to some people who had come down from Hocking Hills. And I agree that if we could have more of those Parklets and have more people, provide more people the chance to eat outside on Court Street and the surrounding streets, that that could help Athens become more of a destination to come and have dinner or have lunch. And and, you know, because hey, let's go eat outside there at Court Street in Athens, or, you know, around Court Street. And I wondered if, I really like the idea of kind of highlighting what Brennan's did this year. And I wonder if Jessica and Josh would be open to being kind of the poster children of having Parklets outside your restaurant in the Court Street area.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think either of us would have a problem with that.
All right. Yeah, that's really good. Yeah, you'd be good, appealing folks for that, too. And I guess I was just wondering, I mean, clearly, it would be up to council or the mayor to decide on, or Andrew, to decide on how late that could go. But do you have a, like, do you have a date in mind that you would prefer?
Um, we're pretty open on that. We kind of thought, if we go through the end of October, at least, that's probably as much as we can hope for the weather to hold out. A lot of it is just seeing how people are handling it. If it's decent out, and we have a really weird, warm, early winter, late fall, you know, through the end of the, you know, the semester, as it is, would be great. But it's gonna, it's gonna be pretty weather dependent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mayor.
So I too have spoken to Josh Thomas and Jessica to some extent. I would concur with Jessica's plan, you know, to where if the weather holds through October, you know, and I would recommend to council, as we're working on this ordinance, to not have it be October 31st, that it it terminates, but likely, you know, have it extend into, say, November 15th, so that so that the Thomases have time to dismantle it and to take it apart, so they're not feeling rushed to get it taken down either. So as council is considering what I refer to as the Thomas Act, with this particular ordinance, that council also consider the fact that this is a pilot. And I too have not received one negative comment. And I'm uptown Monday through Friday. Not once have I heard a negative comment about the Parklet. In turn, I've heard nothing but favorable comments on on that particular Parklet. So again, I commend the Thomases on what they have done. I think they have kind of set, set the standard as this moves forward. But I want council to consider the success of the pilot and consider, you know, moving it into something that is permanent, as opposed to waiting until later on to make that act at a different point in time, unless council really feels there's more data to collect between now and and November 15th. But again, I would say from everything that I have heard, that it has been aesthetically and functionally successful here in the city of Athens.
Okay, Member Reisner.
Mayor, are you suggesting that instead of just going an extension of a pilot program, which we have done before, just go straight to the chase and say, okay, we're going to make this a permanent feature, starting sometime in spring and extending till sometime in November from from now on?
Well, we we can certainly, Councilmember Reisner, we can certainly work through the timeline details for for a permanent program that allows for this. And again, we can, we can start working on that right now, or we can just deem this as being, well, council can choose to decide whether or not you you feel this was a successful project and warrants, you know, making it, turning it into a permanent program here in the city of Athens.
Well, my point of view, to me, it seems like it's, it is a success. And to say, well, we just need to get more data, which is what a pilot project is supposed to do, seems rather redundant. I think we know enough now to say, yes, we want it, or no, we don't. So let's, let's go forward with it. And hopefully, somebody in transportation will come up with a good modified ordinance for us to consider.
And I'm sure that that Andrew Chickie can certainly assist with that, along with Paul Oakes, city planner, to work out the language for how that moves forward as a permanent program. Thank you, Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you.
Members Smedley, I think you had your hand up.
Thank you, Member Kotzis. And thank you, Andrew, for being here and giving us that update. And to Jessica and Josh, appreciate your guys' business overall, and also the fact that you're the guinea pigs in this, and have done such a fine job at it. My question was going to be if there was, if we were still interested in just extending the pilot. But I guess this question can apply, too, if we want to go ahead and explore making it permanent. If there was time between now and in next session to make those changes that Andrew mentioned, that were problematic, given the terrain, and if there was time to do that before either extension of the pilot or the review of the of the permanent.
To answer your question, Member Smedley, the the changes that we would need to make based on the data that I've gathered so far, and talking to the Uptown businesses, are very minor. By and large, the setup is is good. It's it's really pretty minor in nature. And we did have some businesses that were on a wait and see approach. They wanted to see how it worked with Brennan's and kind of use them as the guinea pig and not to put any skin into it. I get that. We have several more that, at least from the feedback that I've received so far, are have full intention of participating next year. They've been working on some plans. And it's not just for eateries. That is one component. It's a major component. But I spoke to a business owner uptown that does not run an eatery, and he's looking at it as a way to have outdoor sale space and turn that over into park space when his business isn't open. So it's supposed to be versatile, the the purposes for it to be mobile to what the businesses need.
Thank you. If I could just make one more comment, Member Kotzis, if that's okay. And I just want to remind everyone that the main concern that was raised when this was introduced was what this will do with parking. And as was presented early on, when we were first talking about this, every spot that's taken by a Parklet is then replaced by a spot somewhere else. So we don't lose any parking out of this project. We're just enhancing the outdoor space and using it in a different way. So that's another reason to look forward to something like this being more permanent. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Grace, I believe you you had your hand up.
Thank you, Member Kotzis. You're doing a great job keeping track of members raising hands. And thank you, Jessica and Andrew, for for being here. I I have been a big supporter of Parklets and of this idea. I think the Brennan's Parklet is is beautiful, and I I would really be thrilled to see more of them. The thing that I wonder, as we, as council considers making this a permanent option, a permanent opportunity, is whether we would want to impose specific opening and closing dates based on season, because the seasons can be, and the temperatures can really fluctuate a lot in Ohio. We can have some nice days during the times of years that that would traditionally be considered unseasonable or not outdoor seating weather. And I've also been in places where they have outdoor seating with outdoor heaters. And I I don't know if that's something that we would want to consider, the opportunity, so that maybe when some someday, when we get back to having horse drawn wagon rides uptown for the holidays, if there are outdoor Parklets that people wanted to sit in while they sip hot cocoa, that, you know, sit outside and listen to the Christmas carols. So I don't, I don't view outdoor seating as an only warm weather opportunity. And so I think I I would just be interested in hearing others' thoughts on that. And I I know Brennan's has some delicious hot beverages that can can warm you up when it's chilly outside. So yeah, I just wanted to throw out there that that we might not need to specify specific months, that it's only available or only an option during specific months.
Member Cladfelter.
I I like Member Grace's suggestion that she just made. I think with climate change, our climate has just gone, has gotten much less predictable, right? We can have days in the 50s and 60s in December, or January, or February, maybe not for the whole month, but maybe several days in a row that might be enough. I mean, it would be up to the business owners, but they might be willing to haul out the Parklet again and set it up. And people might just flock to those Parklets on those rare, warm days that pop up now and again in the winter. So yeah, I too think that largely because of climate change, that maybe we should be a little more flexible about the dates. But I was also wondering, and and if you don't like this idea, that's completely fine. The the Thomases have done an exceptional job with their Parklet, right? I don't think we could have asked a business to provide a better initial example of how this could work well. But we've got a pretty small amount of data, right? We've got one business that has done it. I wonder if if there, if it could be worth considering extending the pilot for one more year. Andrew said that there are, I believe you said there were five or six other businesses who were considering it. I wonder if telling them that it would definitely happen in 2021 would be enough to encourage them to make the investment to create the Parklets, or if they would need to know it would be permanent, because it's possible that not everybody would do it as well as the Thomases, right? And so I just wonder if we might want to get a little more data before declaring that it should be a permanent fixture. Though I will say, I am all for it becoming a permanent fixture. Don't get me wrong. I love this idea. But I just wonder if we, we ought to be just a little more careful to assure that it will in fact be a positive thing for Uptown Athens.
Okay. And and just just listening to this, this conversation has has brought a couple questions of my own. Andrew, I was, I was curious to know if there's been discussions about during the normal year when we would have street closures. You know, I know that not, you know, not all the Parklets would interfere with every street closure, but I would assume that there are, there are some instances where a Parklet wouldn't work with what was already being proposed, you know, in those, in those, those block closures. So I didn't know if there was anything there. The other thing that I was wondering, too, is just, since we haven't seen the teardown, or we haven't seen a full season yet of of what, how these, how these work, if we were still approaching a pilot, I know that there was some talk about already modifying the pilot, would there, would there be change within the the request for the extension, that not only just just extending the date, but also looking at minor changes that that you were already noticing?
So to to answer the first part, which is take down during special events, that is included in the language of the of the ordinance that was passed. It is part of the application process that it must be taken down in a reasonable manner, on a reasonable amount of time. I don't want to speak for the Thomases, since Jessica is here, but they had told me that the time it takes for them to remove their structure is very, very short. I think it's a matter of only a couple of hours. The most of all part is the actual physical loading it onto a trailer, more so than the deconstruction piece. And that was in part thinking about some of our major events that happen uptown, specifically the the bike race, the Brick Criterion that needs additional space, and we do not want to create an interference where one wasn't before. So that is included in the in the package. I would caution that one of the reasons that we had set kind of a starting and an ending period was in part to to compromise with the other businesses that aren't necessarily interested in this, and putting one in for themselves, but are interested in making sure that there is ample parking stock. And while we have a net positive, actually, and again, the mayor asked us to get really creative, myself and Paul, when we were first approaching this, and we took a hard look at what our parking stock looked like. We know that the parking garage is rarely, if ever, completely full. We looked at our College Street lot. But that isn't to say that business doesn't still want parking nearby. We want to see what it looks like when we have a full load of students, and we've discussed that before. So having a starting date that's flexible, I think, is something worth considering. Having some sort of ending date, at least in my mind, for parking enforcement, that we have some some clear boundaries is helpful, just from administrative structure. Again, I'll leave it and I'll defer to to the committee to consider those issues. But it is, we do want to be holistic in nature and consider the interests of of all the businesses. Although by and large, every business that I've talked to, and I I meet with the Uptown Business Association monthly, has been really in favor of this. So there's a lot of positives. And again, the adjustments that we would need to to make in the language is very, very minor. We're talking a few pin strokes, really. If the Transportation Committee wants to to make adjustments, I'd encourage them to to just send me a message directly with what you'd want to propose, and and we can vet it. And I'm sure the mayor will task me over over to this and away from some other things temporarily, so we can make this successful. So.
And and I would also want to remind, not the the timeline that we're that we're looking at, because the program expires in two days, we would be looking at an extension on the on the first Monday of the month. And we would also be asking for a suspension at that time, so that we can make sure that we can, we can continue the pilot program, you know, in that in that timeframe. So if we were considering a going, going straight to an ordinance, instead of a pilot, we would, there, there might be some, well, I would recommend at least extending the pilot, and then maybe we look straight to looking at maybe making this this an official part of Athens. Is there any other questions at this point? Okay, we're good. So Andrew Chickie and Jessica Thomas, thank you so much for coming tonight. The the conversation was just just so robust. It was great.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. And then the the last bullet point, let me get over here to the agenda, is the vendors licenses. And Mayor Patterson, my understanding is that we had a request from some of the vendors, and if you would like to speak to that, that would be great.
Certainly. So I was approached by a vendor who was wanting to know if it was, would be possible temporarily under COVID-19 to reduce the permit rates up on East Union, which is, again, the only spaces that the city currently has in the uptown area that is not private property, to where we have vending that goes on. And they were asking, as I said, to see if the rates temporarily under COVID-19, to give them some relief, and given the fact that Ohio University is not back to full student enrollment on campus, that it would certainly offset the decrease in customers that they would that they would see at their vending trucks, their food trucks. I'm not opposed to this. I think that this, personally, I believe that this is another way in which we can certainly help our local commerce when they're struggling under a global pandemic. But I know that what I informed the individual is, and Andrew Chicky has been reaching out to them as well, that this is certainly something that would have to come before council and have council action in order to make such a change, because it is within code.
Mayor, thank you. Any questions from Transportation? Member Crowell.
Thank you, Member Kotzis. I'm in support of this. I also question whether a similar sort of relief could be made to brick and mortar restaurants that might want to put a table and chairs on the sidewalk, even, even if they're not interested in doing the full parklet right now. Extend, many, a number of restaurants don't have any outdoor seating at all. And I'm not actually, maybe Mr., Mr. Chicky or Mayor Patterson can tell me. I'm not sure exactly how one submits a permit to have a table and chairs on the sidewalk. And is there a fee for that? There, there is not. There is no permitting process. The, the guidance, as I recall, Councilmember Crowell, is that table and chairs can be five feet out from the, the facade of your building. I'll get the actual footage for you. But there are, as you're aware, several businesses in the uptown area that already have cafe tables and chairs out in front that did not require permitting. The, the one caveat with that, again, it's not a permit issue, it's just making sure that free and safe passage for pedestrians and in particular, people with disabilities that, that they're able to safely traverse across that particular, in front of that particular property. So that has always been the case to where, at least under my administration, to where there is no fee, there's no permit, that businesses can do that. And I encourage that. I think that that's, again, pre-COVID, that was, in my mind, good practice. It makes sure establishment attractive and look like a fun place to go in and possibly dine or whatever it is you're doing there. So that's the answer behind that, Member Crowell, that, that currently there is, no one has to go to the city, down to the code office or anywhere else for that matter, to get a permit to put cafe tables. Again, as long as they're up against the facade of the, of their establishment. Okay. Thank you very much for that information. I'm just thinking about the parklets, and it is great that some of our businesses have outdoor patios and things that are in the back that nobody sees. And it's wonderful when you find out that they're there and you can go sit outside. But they don't bring in like the parklet in front of Brennan's. It's not this kind of welcoming, oh, look what's happening out on the street, you know? So more parklets and more tables on our sidewalks, I think, just adds to the ambiance of, of Uptown Athens. Thank you for that information. You know, if I, if I may add to that just briefly, you know, one of the things I think would have been very interesting this summer, when we did launch the pilot with council's approval, obviously, to have the extended outdoor eating spaces, parklets, that I think everyone tends to think the design in which Brennan's has utilized, I, there was one establishment uptown that was kind of reversing the idea of how to go about doing that and using a parking space or two to extend the sidewalk out into that parking space and therefore freeing up a little bit more seating space up against the front of their building. And again, I think we have that to see, hopefully with council's approval next year, to see people get very creative with what they can do with that particular program. So again, I, I, I agree with you, Member Crowell. I, your whole question about the outdoor seating spaces, but I think there's some things that we've not experienced yet that we may experience next summer.
Member Fall.
Thank you. I just want to remind people that you cannot drink alcohol on cities. So some of, like, some of the ones who would really like to do this would probably be the bars. But they're the ones who, you know, a lot of them have space in the back. And that is something that we can't really change, nor would we want to. So that's something that will be kind of limiting for some of the businesses. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Member Grace.
Thank you, Member Kotzis. I'm wondering what timeframe is being considered? Is the request for relief in, in the current calendar year? So currently active permits? Or moving forward into next year? Is this, are, are we talking about a, a change to code to, to permanently alter the cost of the permits or just a, a provide relief in, for like the, the remainder of this year?
It would be, no, it would be for the duration of us being under a global pandemic that is impacting our businesses. So again, it would be an extended timeframe. But, you know, once, once, and who knows when that is, but once we can get our hands around COVID-19 and get it under control, then it would revert back to the regular permitting rates, permit rates for vending. You know, if you think about it, the rate at which an individual pays to bend in the city parking spaces on, on East Union pales in comparison to what a lot of our bricks and mortar businesses are currently paying also under a pandemic. And so, I mean, this would give them some relief, again, the, the vendors some relief. But again, this would not be a permanent, permanent change to the, the rate structure for vending in the, in the city's parking spaces, designated parking spaces.
All right. Do we have any more? Member Reisner.
Excuse my mind, how many permits are out there right now?
Councilmember Reisner, I am not sure. I can certainly get that number for you and, and email each of you if you're interested. There are some that are out there and they're being held, even though they may not be vending currently. That's kind of typical, especially when we get into the colder months of the year, into the winter season, that they will carry that permit over into the following spring. So, but I can get that total number to you.
Okay. Thanks.
Member Crowell.
If, if council and then the administration remembers, we changed the vendors' ordinance about 18 months ago to allow vendors to have monthly licenses. And I actually checked with Director Riggs this week, and there are no current vendors who have monthly licenses. So that's the answer to your question, Mr. Reisner.
Thank you, Councilmember Crowell.
No vendors at all?
There's nobody who is currently vending on East Union Street. There, I pointed it out to Director Riggs because the signage doesn't indicate that currently. We don't have a parking problem uptown, so I don't think it's been an issue. But he was going to look into the signage and why they are all facing the street, even though there are no current vendors who have purchased licenses.
That's a good question. Thanks.
Sure.
Any additional questions, comments? It looks like we're good. With that, I can wrap up Transportation Committee. Thank you.
Okay. And that ends our evening's discussion. Thanks for